All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Please, please rise for the pledge. All right, T, you wanna go ahead and take role?
Wait, what's, are we changing what's going on here?
We're having a meeting.
We're waiting, we're waiting.
I, I was waiting for Will to tell me you guys were ready, so I could call the meeting to order.
Well, we called it to order, so go ahead.
Okay. Well, you already said it. Ms. Erickson, will you take the role, please?
Councilmember Chronic.
Here.
Councilmember Romano.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Here.
Mayor Lakine.
I am here, and it's seventy.
Councilmember.
Here.
Okay, is, is our attorney online? I was told that he may be remote, he may be in person, I did not hear where he was gonna be.
He's going to be remote, but he has not yet joined.
Will, can we?
Okay, I see, I see Mr. Cole has joined. Mr. Cole, welcome to the meeting. Have you received any disclosures of conflicts of interest from any of the council members?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay, then, we'll move on to us having an agenda and a consent agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda?
Just a quick question. Maybe the mayor changed to mayor or grandpa Mitch? I think.
Grandpa mayor.
You're welcome. I have no changes to the agenda. All right, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Erickson.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Temple.
Yes.
All right, Mayor Lakine.
I am here.
Councilmember Fiorio.
Here, or, yeah, I, sorry.
Councilmember Abbott. Yes. Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Romano.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, first up, we have a presentation, we have two presentations tonight. First one up is Pike's Peak Regional Building Department's annual report. Is Mr. D'Grando there?
Appreciate it. I have Greg D'Grando with us. Greg's our public information officer. He spent a lot of time putting together a slideshow, a little bit of the activity in Monument and the Pike's Peak region, so I'll turn it over to Greg, and I'm happy to answer any questions that should be had.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for having us in. We do this for you guys every year. We kinda just go over the 2020 or the yearly numbers. This year, we're going over the 2024 numbers, so we'll kinda give you an overview of what we have seen in the Pike's Peak region. As you guys may know, we serve eight jurisdictions, Monument included in that eight that we serve, so we'll go over all of the Pike's Peak region numbers, and then we'll drill down specifically into the Monument activity. So if we can just go to the first slide. Okay, and you can go ahead and go to the next one, please. Okay, so the 2024 highlights, housing construction had a slight improvement. We had more than thirty-five hundred apartment units reach completion. New apartment units, on the other hand, dropped significantly. New commercial permits also declined. Re-roof permits remained extremely high, and we had an increase in our overall inspection totals. Next slide. So here's a look at our new single-family homes, kinda breakdown by month, and then totaled up for the year at the very bottom, and then on the right, you'll see the commercial numbers. On the single-family side of things, you'll kinda notice that we were off to a pretty strong start in the first first quarter and part of the second quarter, and then you get into, into May and June, that's when things started to slow down, continued to slow through the summer, and stayed fairly slow throughout the year, but again, we were off to such a strong start at the beginning of 2024. We ended up compared to 2023. On the commercial side of things, on the right, you'll notice only three hundred and two new slides. We were down significantly compared to 2023, and then really drastically down compared to the extra busy years that we had in 2021 and 2022. Excellent. Here's a breakdown of the homes. So, single-family homes, we were at two thousand eight hundred and fifty-four, that's up seven percent compared to 2023 numbers, and then I broke those numbers down further into the three categories of single-family home: detached homes, townhomes, and duplexes. Detached homes, we had two thousand four hundred and sixty-three. Townhomes, we had two hundred and seventy-three, and then duplexes, we had one eighteen. The way duplexes worth work, it's one permit equals two units, so that's why there's one hundred and eighteen permits, but two hundred and thirty-six units. Breakdown by jurisdiction, Colorado Springs had one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight. El Paso County had just over a thousand. Here in Monument, you guys had a hundred and ninety-three, that's down thirty percent. Fountain had sixty-five, that's up eighteen percent. Then Woodland Park with thirty-eight, Palmer Lake with seven, Manitou with five, and then Green Mountain Falls with zero. This is a visual, this is kind of a look at where a lot of that permit activity is happening. In the past, you may remember, I have brought my beautiful green triangles to you guys in the past. This year, I have stepped up my game and added red triangles and orange triangles as well. Basically, what that is, I just kinda separated out the different types of single-family homes. So your detached homes are gonna be the green triangles, the red triangles are gonna be your townhomes, and the orange triangles are gonna be the duplex. The purple squares that you see are going to be the new apartment projects that were permitted, and then there are a very small amount of condos. They're actually covered up by some of the data points, but those are gonna be marked in pink stars, and we'll get into those coming up here shortly. Here's a closer look at Monument and the Palmer Lake area, and we'll kinda zoom in on each of these projects as we go, but I just wanted to give you kind of a a zoomed-out view of some of the growth that's happening in your community. Next slide. So here's a look again for Monument, specifically, single-family homes, one ninety-three, that's down thirty percent compared to 2023. The breakdown by the larger neighborhoods here in the Monument area, Jackson Creek with ninety-four, Monument Junction with sixty, Forest Lakes, that's in El Paso County. Councilman King and I, we talked about this last year, if you remember. It's close to Monument, but technically, it's El Paso County. Close to Monument, Mr. Romano. And I don't get into too many, I don't wanna say fights, discussions like that on my social media page, so. Willow Springs, thirty-four, and then Home Place Ranch, which is just to the west, west of Sanctuary Point, twenty-eight homes there. Single-family estimated valuation was a hundred and seventeen million, that's down six percent compared to the year before. Residential alterations, we are at one thousand three hundred and thirty-one, that's down two percent. Estimated valuation on those alterations, nine point seven million.
Quick question on the, on the valuations. Is there, do you have numbers to show the, the differences from about three years ago, following the Gallagher Amendment vote? Because, and here's why I ask, following that vote, my my residents went shot up through the roof, but then it dropped back down. So I'm wondering if this change in valuation was a course correction or a no-kidding drop in, in valuation? Do we have, do we have those?
Well, so, I'll let Roger kinda touch on it. So the, the valuation that we are, that we are listing here is the construction to, or the cost to build each house. But I'll let Roger kinda.
Okay, thank you.
Roger, level, yeah, a bit more to, to expand on that. The valuation is determined by a couple of different methods. It, it can be when the contractor comes in and gives us the contract price for the home, in this case. We take that number, we also compare that number versus the ICC valuation tables. ICC is International Code Council, and they redo those valuation tables on a routine basis. In 2023, we, we updated our valuation tables in 2023 over some old ones, so the numbers don't necessarily jive completely well with 2023 and beyond. But the valuation numbers are some of the better indicators that we have. Just while I'm on the topic of valuation, Greg spoke a little bit about commercial permit numbers. The real important thing to pay attention to on commercial is valuation, because a, a shed for a church counts as a commercial permit, a hospital counts as a commercial permit. Obviously, the valuation is different between the two. So.
Uh, next slide, please. So I'll kinda run through these fairly quickly, but I just wanted to give you a visual to some of the neighborhoods in Monument. Monument Junction on the left, again, sixty homes there. Jackson Creek is on the right, ninety-four new homes in that neighborhood. Next slide. Home Place Ranch.
Can you, can you go back to that, that last slide? Are you counting north of Higbee as Jackson Creek?
Yeah, in this, and I understand that that's likely not considered Jackson Creek, that might actually be the county as well to the north of Higbee Road, but just for this map purposes, I lumped it all under Jackson.
I'm gonna make you start doing our annexations for us. Keep adding, adding stuff to Monument. I'll call you about that, Roger. We'll, we'll walk you through the process.
Again, Home Place Ranch, this is near Sanctuary Point, twenty-eight new homes going in there. This is on the west side of I-25, Forest Lakes, forty-four new homes going in there, that's El Paso County, and then Willow Springs, thirty-four new homes going in there, and I believe Willow Springs is technically Monument. Whereas Forest Lakes is the county. Excellent. So here's a breakdown by neighborhood. This isn't just gonna be Monument, this is all of the top ten neighborhoods. Banning Lewis led the way with two hundred and ninety-five new homes, followed by Falcon, Sterling Ranch, Larson Ranch, Wolf Ranch, Cordera, Springs Ranch, Jackson Creek, Aspen Meadows, and then Bradley Heights. Next slide. So this next slide, I always refer to this as the big blue blob. This is a look at the number of re-roof permits that we issued last year, sixteen thousand one hundred and thirty-nine, and that is actually down nine percent compared to the year before. For the most part, I think a lot of those re-roof permits are still spillover from the hailstorms that hit in 2023. It took the insurance companies kind of a while to kinda start giving the go-ahead to get some of those roof projects done, and then, of course, everything hit the roofers all at the same time, so then the roofers are still playing a little bit of catch-up to the 2023 numbers. We did have at least one minor hailstorm that hit last year, and it hit in the Larson Ranch area, it's southeast of Colorado Springs, so that's kinda where what we call probably the hardest-hit area for 2024.
It would've been easier to just mark the ones that weren't hit.
In, in some instances, you're probably right, sir. Next slide. So here is a look at our commercial permits. As I mentioned earlier, three hundred and two new commercial projects, that's down twenty-five percent. It's the third straight year that we've seen a decline in commercial activity. New multifamily, we had eight hundred and thirty-eight new apartment units permitted, that's down sixty-three percent, and it's the fewest total that we've seen since 2015. On the flip side, we had three thousand seven hundred and ninety-five units reach completion, open up to renters, and complete full certificate of occupancy. At the end of the year, we had, we still had six thousand and sixty apartment units under construction, so we are anticipating this year, by the end of the year, somewhere around three thousand more units will be reaching that completion date. We do have a lot of apartment units operating what we call a temporary certificate of occupancy. A TCO allows people to move into said units and begin living, but under our stand, from our standpoint, it's still not considered complete until it reaches that CO, so that's why that six thousand number is still there. Again, we're anticipating somewhere around three thousand to be reaching CO by the end of this year. Some of the other notable commercial projects, Patriot Park Apartments, two hundred and eighty-six units, that's located at Powers and Platt, Abrams Elementary in D-8, that's a forty-million-dollar project, two King Supers projects, one in Fountain, one in Flying Horse, the one in Flying Horse just opened up a couple weeks ago. The one in Fountain is still under construction. The restaurant at the Ford Amphitheater, that's an eight-million-dollar project, still under construction. Bentley Commons is a one hundred and sixty-eight-unit affordable housing project in Colorado Springs, and then there are several renovation projects happening right now at the Colorado Springs Airport, many of which are to basically build a customs area. If you guys may have heard last year, Southwest Airlines announced that they'll be flying internationally to Mexico, so we have to now have a customs area built at the local airport to accommodate that. Next slide. So here's a look at some of the projects that finished up last year. You had the Ford Amphitheater reach completion, the USAFA Visitor Center, as well as the Hotel Polaris. Hotel Polaris is open, up and running. The Visitor Center is complete from a construction standpoint, but they still have to put all the exhibits and get everything decorated. I believe that's set to open later this year, fall, if not December, I think I'd heard. The EpiCenter Apartments, this is downtown Colorado Springs, just south of the Switchback Soccer Stadium, four hundred and eight units there. The Alta Twenty-Five Apartments, you guys are probably familiar with that one, two hundred and sixty-four units, and then the Woody and Millie Guest House, just outside of St. Francis Hospital, opened up last year as well. Estimated valuation for all construction, three point four billion, and that's billion with a B. The construction industry continues to play an important role in our local economy with lots of activity. Next slide. So here's a look at Monument commercial activity, seventy permits on the commercial side of things, and this includes subs, so now, now I'm including in the total HVAC, electrical, plumbing, all those subs, so that's why that number's a little bit higher. It's up six percent. You had the Monument Warehouse, that's a fourteen-million-dollar project on the west side of I-25. Town of Monument, you had three wellhouses that were permitted. All of the three combined, I think it came out to two million. You have a neighborhood community center for two million, and then a new Ziggy's Coffee coming in for one million. Commercial estimated valuation, twenty-seven million, and that's down fifty-five percent. I would say, don't let that percentage drop freak you out too much. If you guys remember, in 2023, there was a, I believe, forty-million-dollar warehouse space, so that was a very, very large dollar amount, so even though it's a decline, it was large, very, very large the year before. Commercial alterations, who came in at ninety-nine, that's down seven percent. One of those alterations, the Monument Fire Station Number Four, that's a one-point-two-million-dollar project happening there. Next slide. So here's a look at the apartments. New multifamily projects for Monument, you had Front Street Apartments, that's three units. That project is the same builder as the condos. The two units that were permitted, that's the first set of condos that we've seen since 2021, and that's in our entire Pike's Peak region. Those three units on the apartments, I've talked with our planning folks, as well as our permitting folks, I think those are gonna need to be switched to condos as well. It's the same builder. Not exactly sure how it happened, but we're already kinda in the works to get those switched officially to become, it should be five units of condos rather than three apartments and two condos. Apartments currently under construction, Pike's Peak region, again, just over six thousand, three units are in Monument. Again, those are the condo units. The rest of the, the apartments that you guys have, have reached full completion. Here's a look at our plan review numbers. New single-family homes, we were at two thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine, that's up six percent compared to 2023. Residential alterations, we were down thirteen percent. New commercial and multifamily, we were down ten percent, and then split that out, new commercial, we were down six percent, and multifamily, we were down thirty-nine percent. Commercial alterations, plus one percent, and then total plans, twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-eight plans coming our way, that's down six percent compared to 2023. Next slide. So the next slide, we're gonna go over our inspection totals. We did a grand total of two hundred and ninety-six thousand one hundred and twelve inspections last year. That is up three percent, and that boost is largely because we had so many re-roof inspections last year that it bumped our overall total up. We ended the year with sixty-three inspectors out in the field. The department averages about eleven hundred inspections each day, and the daily average for each of our inspectors is about twenty. It's except for our roofing guys. Our roofing inspectors are normally averaging probably more like twenty-five to thirty, and the way that they're able to do so many is because most of those re-roof projects are clustered altogether, so in some cases, they don't have to even get back in their vehicle, they just walk from house to house, so they're able to do a little bit more than the rest of our inspectors. Regional building, we are still offering same-day inspections. We are one of the only building departments in the state that offers same-day inspections on everything except for roofing, as well as our elevator team. So the green triangles that I went over with you today are not available to the public, but what is available to the public is our Public GIS Mapping Tool, and that's what you're looking at here. This is available on our website, just slide off to the far right, it's under Activity Charts. Click on Public GIS Mapping Tool. Off to the left, you can kinda see a number of filters. You can set it for, if you wanna look at the single-family home activity, new commercial activity, where the multifamily activity, you can do that, you can leave it at all, which would be all eight of our jurisdictions. If you only care about Monument, you can set Monument in there, and there's a lot of parameters that you can set on the left. It will then kinda basically change the map in front of you, and then as you zoom in, those red dots are gonna move on you a little bit, and then once you get down to one or two, you can click on them, and it will give you information to include the type of project, it will let you know who the contractor is, the estimated valuation, the square footage, a lot of information that I think will be valuable, anybody that wants to play around with that tool. And again, that's open, free, available to anyone. Next slide. You guys have probably seen this before. This graph has not changed, and that's something we're very, very proud of. We continue to offer the lowest fees in the entire state of Colorado on single-family homes, and if you compare us to, we'll just say other jurisdictions, in some cases, it's not even close. On the commercial side of things, we are second, only down slightly behind Pueblo. Next slide. And we do offer four classes, all of which are free. We offer a Contractor 101 class on the first Wednesday of each month. That class is obviously designed for contractors, new contractors, or anybody who might want to become a contractor. We walk them through the process of, you know, licensing, how to pull permits, how to request inspections, how to submit plans, it's a great class. We have started offering a homeowner permitting class, and we just had our second class, we offered it for the first time in the fall of last year. We just had our second class last week, and it was full, so that's certainly encouraging, that we have a lot of homeowners looking to do DIY projects, do their own work. This doesn't necessarily show people how to do the work. We are not a building school, but what it does is it goes over the process of what they need to pull a homeowner permit, and then again, go over that permitting process, how to use our dashboard, how to request inspections, and that sort of thing. And then we also offer residential Realtor class for our local Realtors, and a commercial property class that is for commercial brokers, but also anybody that's looking to start a brick-and-mortar. This class is kinda designed to try to help people pick out the right spot, or in some cases, make sure they don't pick the wrong spot. And we've seen that happen in some cases where they think they have the perfect property, and they go in, and they find out they have to go through a change of occupancy, and now they have to install sprinklers, or expand their bathrooms, or add an emergency exit, and then they end up in a tough spot even before they get going, so that's what that class is kinda all about, trying to avoid those scenarios. All those classes are free, and you can sign up for those on our website. We have an education button off to the far right. And with that, I believe that is it. If you have any questions for me.
Does council have any questions for Greg or Roger?
What time are those? Do you know when the class schedule is, is it posted?
So the commercial, the Contractor 101, that's standing on the first Wednesday of each month at four o'clock, and that is at our main facility at twenty-eight eighty International Circle. And then the commercial, or I'm sorry, the homeowner and the commercial broker class and the Realtor class, they fluctuate. So on our website, go to our education button, we don't have the next homeowner class permitted or scheduled just yet, but we do have the next Realtor class and the next commercial broker class scheduled. Thank you.
You put a lot into a little good presentation, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Okay. Yep, thank you. Okay, next. We have the Jackson Creek Parkway, ninety percent roadway design presentation. Mr. Tharnish, Mr. Murray, and representatives from FHU.
Evening, council members. Tonight, we're gonna present to you the ninety percent roadway design for Jackson Creek Parkway from just, you can tell we have a map spread on the back that shows the section we're gonna be talking about tonight. And it runs from Higbee Road to the north to where it ties into the section that's already been worked on. And tonight, I have with us Steve Murray with FHU, and go ahead and go to the next slide. So, within our autonomy team, of course, Madeline, me, and Cassandra, Cassie, working on our end of it, and then the partner agencies, we have Tri-V Metro, El Paso County, CDOT. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to, oh, I guess there's more consultants here. FHU, I thought there was more.
Those are lessened.
Yeah. You got the biggest logo, you know? So FHU, JR Engineering, Bachman PR, Vivid Geotech, TRS, and Clanton and Associates. Then you got Classic on the Jackson Creek North, Jackson Creek Parkway North, and Kimley Horn on the Higbee Road. So I'll turn it over to Steve Murray to continue, and we'll wait for any questions after the fact.
Thanks, Tom. Steve Murray with FHU, it's a pleasure to be here to present on the ninety percent plans for Jackson Creek Parkway to the mayor and council, so thank you for having us. Next slide. So, this is a, this is our process slide. Everything that you see in green and to the left has already been accomplished in the project, and then everything to the right of that dark green, we are here bar, is what we have left, which is primarily acquiring right-of-way and finalizing the environmental permits. There's going, we've submitted our ninety percent set of plans, which is a major milestone. Now, you can basically say you're shovel-ready. We will need to address some comments from the reviews, and we may, we, we need to add a new development for the fire station, just north of the YMCA, that's a change that's gonna have to be made to the plans, but other than that, the plans are in really good shape, so we're just waiting for comments on that, and then we will address the comments, and the plans will be then be prepared for construction once funding is ready, so that's what the process chart shows. Construction will take twelve to eighteen months, we'll talk a little bit later in the presentation on, on the schedule, and that's pending funding. So, next slide. This is just a reminder of what it looks like today. This is of flying, flying north in the corridor as you're flying up Jackson Creek Parkway, just crossing Higbee and then into our project area. Next slide. The existing conditions today, we've got three intersections, one at the YMCA and the school, one at Higbee, and one at 105. Of course, that's already been changing because of the developments that have been taking place, everything is changing. Of course, that's already been changing because of the developments that have been taking place, everything is changing very rapidly. This plan will then modify that existing condition, next slide. To be a four lane section all the way north to one oh five with numerous intersections throughout the corridor, next slide. So in its final state, there'll be a number of intersections as shown here. This could even change based on development, depending on when construction occurs. But I think the key thing to know is that as we're doing this project, we're not doing it in a vacuum. We're working with all the different agencies that Tom had mentioned. We're working together and all of these intersections also will be coordinated either through fiber optics or through radio. And we can get some progression through the corridor and they do operate at an acceptable level of service. So these are not being designed piecemeal, it's considered as a system. So next slide. The roadway section, proposed roadway section includes four eleven foot lanes, a five foot bike lane on each side. An eighteen foot median that is either hardscaped or has landscaping depending where it's at in the corridor. There's sidewalks on either side and we have dark sky lighting that we have proposed as well. Yeah, we wanted to have a multi-use sidewalk on one side of the roadway so that it would accommodate more than just pedestrians, but also bikes. And an eight foot is the smallest multi-use sidewalk you can have. Good question, thank you. Next slide. Here's some of the concepts that Cassie put together for, for the median. These will, this will kind of, it'll be a nice sprinkled design, a little bit north of the YMCA intersection. And, and before you get to the Whataburger, there's some segments there that'll be landscaped. But there's actually quite a bit of just hardscape median as well. It's not the full corridor, so. And that'll be shared with light poles as well in the center. Next slide. Okay, and this is where the, the maps just don't show up on the slides very well. So I just went ahead and provided a monster plot in the back so that you can study it a little bit better. But starting on the very south end of the corridor, what's included in the project is a regional water quality pond. This is on CSI property and so we would have to negotiate a shared agreement with them to do this. They're aware of it, we've been working with them all along. In fact, this pond accommodates a lot of their water from their developments, including the fire station developments. Could also clean some of their water here in this pond. And so this is, as I said, a regional pond, it accommodates all the water that hits Jackson Creek Parkway. And there's a lot of contributors that contribute to the water that meets Jackson Creek Parkway and runs down to here. Ends up going into a big seventy two inch pipe into a very large pond, gets cleaned and then it outfalls into Teach Out Creek. So that's the very south part of the project. We submitted this set of plans much earlier in the years and ninety percent set of plans. We were thinking it would be phase one and it could be constructed early. If enough funds were found, this could, this could go first and then the roadway widening could go next when funding is found. So it gives you the option for that, so that's its own set of plans. And then the next slide. And that is, this next portion is the roadway portion. We just submitted this set of plans in January and this is now the ninety percent set of plans, three hundred and twenty five plan sheets. To construct everything that you see in purple. And the estimated cost is around thirteen point five million, there should be an M at the end of that five, not thirteen point five dollars. So unfortunately, I know, I know. Yeah. And the next slide, when you combine the two projects together. You end up with about fifteen point seven million, I think, when we put the, the thirty percent FIR plan set together. Our estimated cost at that time was right around that sixteen million dollar mark, we're not really shifting much from that. I, I've thrown in, you know, a million dollars of minor contract revisions and five hundred thousand dollars for. Mobilization and a five percent contingency, we're trying to cover some of these changes that might happen, but we don't control the market. So whenever we go to construction, the contractors will determine the cost of the project, but we're trying to keep it realistic for you. And that's where I feel fairly confident that we stand today, so. Next slide. All right, schedule, so this is what we have been through to the ninety percent design. To be determined will be when we bid the project and we would go to construction. I expect probably twelve to eighteen months of construction, depending. The phasing on this, on this project is really pretty simple. It's keep traffic on existing while building the east side and then you switch it. And so it's not going to be that difficult on existing traffic, the contractor should be able to make good time on it. So it could be more in the twelve month range than the eighteen month, we don't have a lot of utility impacts in the corridor due to the way that we designed it. And, and so I think that once we do get the funding, the good news is I think it'll move fairly quickly. But that again, will be dependent upon the contractor that we select and what the choices that they make. So what's left, reiterating property acquisition and NEPA permitting. So once I get all of my comments back from this next ninety percent review and I address all of those comments and we add in the, the new development. Then I will set up a meeting with C dot to kind of kick off in their system. That we've hit the ninety percent, which then helps us to get the NEPA section of this done. And then also the right of way, they call it a roper, it's a right of way plan review. And so that's what I will be doing next. So that concludes my presentation. Next slide. Any questions? Questions or comments from the council on the presentation?
Yes, you're saying twelve months to eighteen months?
Twelve to eighteen months for construction is what I would estimate.
And how big of an impact is that going to be on the high school? And then also all the homes that are on to the east side of.
Well, I certainly won't say no impact. It's construction is kind of like one of those things when you go in for surgery, you know, doc, is it going to hurt? It always does, but I think that, I think that. We'll be able to accommodate the traffic fairly well. This is a pretty good scenario where construction will be on one side of the roadway, the east side, while traffic is on the existing lanes as it is today. So phase one, you'll have no change in traffic. But there'll still be construction going and, and people tend to slow down and there'll be friction and different things that are happening. There's always some distress to the school, to the YMCA, so there'll certainly be an impact.
But you said there's going to be one lane each way like there is now. It'll be like a lot like they did with the I twenty five.
That's right.
Right, like.
Yep.
It's going to shift, shift.
Yep.
Finally get done.
Yep.
Yeah.
In, in the most simple sense, yep.
So this, this regional pond, this is two and a half million dollars or two point two million for this pond?
Yes.
So who's, who's all contributing in that?
That, that's, that's unknown to me, we've identified a number of contributors. In terms of contributing water, but we have not found a number of contributors contributing money. So at this point, I think we need to put a strategy together, is that fair, Madeline, to? See if we can get some participation, but I don't know that we have one that would guarantee participation.
It, so that's, that's dug out now, correct? It needs, it needs all the infrastructure for the pond, is that the?
I don't believe that's been dug out yet, there is a pond that I believe that Rob Aldac was working on that's just south of Jackson Creek Parkway. This is a different pond than that.
Okay, okay, I'm looking at this, I'm seeing, I'm seeing, I'm looking at it wrong, okay, got it.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Those are the new apartments to the lower left of that pond? Correct.
Right, right.
And, and Higbee, Higbee is to the, to the right side of that picture.
Right. Yeah, I was, I was, when I just saw this, I was assuming it was the one that's been worked on over there, but.
Yeah, and on the wall plot, you can see how big that pond really is.
Yeah, I know, I know the area well. Yeah, somehow we gotta try to figure out how to get some kind of contribution for that.
Yeah, our design approach, we, we could have chased, we were, we're chasing a lot of ideas. We, we don't have to clean that much water for Jackson Creek Parkway. You could save some money by going with a smaller pond, but the problem is it doesn't fix the regional issue that you're facing today.
We, we need, I mean, we need a regional fix for sure because we can't keep going down to the USAF and have them showing us all the damages getting done from. And it's not just from us, I mean, it's from the county too, but.
Exactly.
We have to do something to mitigate that.
So in an effort to address the regional issue, we did go with the largest pond, but it also allows us to clear from a NEPA standpoint, the largest footprint. And then if you do choose later on to go with a smaller pond, you're at least cleared and we don't have to redo any effort.
Yeah, no, I think we need to do a regional fix, we just need to have regional participation.
We're trying.
No, I understand, I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure. Any other questions?
Last question, maybe last. You mentioned funding several times, what is the, how are you feeling about funding, acquiring it?
Well, boy, that's, that's an interesting question. I, I would say that it depends on the, the federal opportunities that might be ahead of us. I think right now there's a bit of a federal freeze on, on some funding that's coming out, so it's, it's yet to be seen. I think we're short somewhere in the neighborhood of nine million, is that fair?
Yeah, we, so we've put three million into the budget for this year. But this will be a conversation that we have to have with council as to how we're going to meet these, this funding need in particular. Staff doesn't have a solution for this one yet. So when we start budget conversations, we will definitely have to talk about this.
Are, is staff already speaking with the developers that are causing the impact?
Well, you know, now that we're not.
Impact, sorry. I lost whatever comment was made to the answer to my question.
I said, as the opportunity comes up, we are, yes.
Okay.
I was just going to say now that we're not paying the hundred and forty seven year old people social security, maybe some money might come available.
You can hope.
Question on the, on the funding, if, if we don't federalize the, the project, does that change the cost or?
No, because it's already federalized.
Okay, is it already, okay, all right. Question on, on the construction, is there a strategy to look at? Once we get to that point, to purchase as much of the equipment, not the equipment, the material ahead of time so that, because I, I don't see the cost dropping. I probably see the cost going up, is there any look at thought process to purchasing as much material as possible ahead of time?
There hasn't, that hasn't been discussed yet, but we're not close enough at this point. But I think it's a, something that's certainly worthy of discussing and depending on the time, depending on the market and the timing of when we have the funding, that might be a great strategy. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, let me pull my agenda back up. We will move on to. Ordinance number oh four twenty twenty five in ordinance repealing and re adopting title one of the Monument Municipal Code. And that will be brought up by Mr. Cole.
So this is our initial. Regular effort to go through the code in a systematic way and make revisions and modifications to implement. The town charter and then any appropriate updates. The, you will recall that we previously did bring two chapters to you that dealt with sales tax, excuse me, and business licensing. Because you were going forward with your, with your new sales tax collection measures. So we've had two chapters that actually have come through and have been updated with charter updates. But, but now we've started back in from the beginning of the code with title one. And just a quick summary of some of the most significant. Changes we deleted and, and in the, in the ordinance. Sections that have been deleted are still noted as a, as a section number. But would have, would have deletions in a marked out way. Where a section is eliminated completely, we, we go ahead and keep that section number in and indicate that that section number has been reserved for future use. So working through some of the most significant of the changes. Section one point oh one point oh six oh, it was deleted. This, this section made initially was part of your code readoption several years ago. And, and it made clear that, that there were some ordinances that hadn't been included. And so we've taken this out and, and as we go through the code, any of those ordinances that haven't been incorporated, we're going to incorporate. With future amendments. So that section's unneeded. One point oh one point oh seven oh, it's been deleted. It stated that the code included ordinances from a specific ordinance number through a specific ordinance number. And while that was accurate when the code was again re adopted several years ago in its entirety, it's no longer accurate. And, and it's just really not necessary to have that in there. And if, if we had it in there every time we would adopt an ordinance, we'd have to update that section also. So we've taken that out. Section one point oh one point oh nine oh, we've included in it some language that had been in. Another section one point oh four oh four oh, they were fairly duplicative. So we've combined those all into the, to the first section and deleted the sec, second one that I mentioned. Section one point oh one point oh one two, it's also been deleted, it's not necessary. It adopted again that, that, that code. Readoption several years ago, it was adopted as an emergency ordinance, we're not proposing this be an emergency ordinance so that, that comes out. It's not needed. Section one point oh four point oh one, it's also been deleted, it was duplicative of one point one point oh two oh. Section one point oh four oh two oh, the next last paragraph, it's deleted, it was, it was duplicative of another section one point oh one oh four oh. Section one point twelve point oh one oh, it includes language restating charter requirements related to the elections and, and conducting those pursuant to the municipal code. Unless otherwise provided in the resolution or ordinance calling the election. Sections one point one two oh two oh and one point one two oh three oh, they restate with some clarifications. The, the process for canceling elections and, and dealing with writing candidate affidavits. One point one two oh four oh, it's been clarified to state that all town elections will be mail ballot elections. So if in the future council wants an election to be conducted as a polling place election. Then it will require an ordinance to revise the municipal code to provide that in addition to just the ordinance calling for the election. Section one point one two oh four oh, it was deleted. The municipal election code uses a permanent absentee voter list only with polling place elections. And since under, under this, this ordinance, you're going to have all your elections as mail ballot elections, then that's not needed. It also read a little, little awkwardly and was kind of confusing. I'd like to really focus you on section one point two oh point oh one oh. It's a provision regarding fines. It states that if, if a fine amount or a violation of the code is not specifically set out in the code. Then the fine is no more than two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. That was the fine amount that was authorized by statute for you as a statutory municipality when, when that section was adopted. In, in twenty thirteen, the state statute allowed that amount to increase. In uh, in twenty thirteen, the state statute allowed that amount to increase by CPI. Uh, your code's never been updated, so that fine amount has never been updated since it was adopted.
Have you calculated what it would be?
We have been, we have been trying to figure that out, and we have not, we have not got that number for you tonight. The uh, so, so the, the points for you to consider, I think, are whether you want to keep that amount as stated, have that mount restated uh, to include the CPI increases from twenty thirteen until now. Um, and do you want to apply automatic increases going forward as allowed by the statute? And then the statute also allows uh, jail time up to one year. Uh, the, the uh, your code currently limits that to ninety days. Uh, and certainly would, would uh welcome any thoughts on that, including any thoughts from your, from your police chief, if if he has any thoughts on that. Uh, if, if you wanted to go forward and if you wanted to utilize uh, an a, a, a fine amount that increases that two thousand six hundred and fifty dollar amount for the CPI increases uh, from from uh, twenty thirteen, you could go forward approving this. With that increase to be approved by the town manager and the town attorney, or we could bring back the ordinance after getting a, a calculation that that I feel is reliable. We could bring it back to you and and have you go forward then with considering the ordinance at that time. I would be happy to answer any questions.
I wouldn't want to make a decision personally on that kind of an increase unless we revisited it and got data, but I think we should get that data uh, or pass it and then amend it later uh, with that data, either one.
We certainly should be able to adjust it by CPI.
Yes.
If you're adjusting it, isn't that following what all the other municipalities or?
Following statute.
Yeah. But shouldn't we have those numbers before we pass it or say we pass it and then get the information back? Um, what are your guys' thoughts?
I think we should pass it.
Yeah.
And, and you know, if we can
Just done.
We could statute. Put the CPI in there as a, as a provisional and
He said we can revisit it.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a maximum amount. It's not
Correct.
Right. It's not the amount. The, the same with the, with the jail time, although I, you know, I would ask our police department if that's something that
Yeah, I'm not sure about the jail time. The CPI on the fines is fine, but I mean, you know.
If we're paying to keep them in jail or contributing to some, you know, I mean, that might be a different story.
Well, we're putting somebody in jail for a year for uh, you know, minor, that, I don't, I don't feel okay with that at all. I mean, but let's, let's hear from uh, Commander Lufdin on that.
Maybe this is something from Madeline, but the municipal judges that I've seen around here, they don't ever put anybody in jail.
It's pretty white.
Yeah, so. Not sure that's much of an issue.
So you want them in jail for two years?
In short version is if the town court judge puts them into custody, we're responsible for the costs and for housing them. And they can come back for the reoccurring of that. That's why we usually do bench warrants for anything that's municipal internally where it's not a arrestable offense, just a motion to reappear kind of thing. If they are held, then we would be responsible for that, sir. I mean, as long as there's nothing violent or that would hurt the citizenry, that's we're not putting those into town municipal level anyway. The teeth are in county court, so when we write a citation for anything more than just a standard ordinance, um, minor traffic infractions, anything like that, we're going to county court where we have the fourth judicial district attorneys taking care of that on the backside of it.
So in your considered opinion, would ninety days be a maximum?
Uh, the, I would highly suggest we follow exactly what it says in, in CRS so that we have a standard set of procedures. So when it, when we're adopting what it says by state statute, that always gives us a maximum and minimum with um uh, the ability to make good decisions one way or the other on a case by case basis. So we're within our jurisdiction and then you still give everybody all that wiggle room to do what they need to based on what they have from a agenda to get finished.
Thank you.
So are you suggesting going to a year then or keeping it at ninety days?
I believe I'd have to look at the statute to make sure what it says within that CRS to make sure we are in compliance with it, but I would suggest after talking with the attorney, what, where they're at, I believe he's saying that he's just keeping with statute at that ninety days um, of where they're at. And we have to have a reason not to go outside of that or uh why we would do something outside of what the standard is, because that's something then you have to track internally through court, how long it's gonna last, how long become a judicial issue anyway. Honestly, I mean, it should be from all equity point of view. And then a judge would say, hey, this mandates something beyond that, right? Exactly, right.
Yeah, it would be, it'd be hard for me to believe that any municipal issues would be more than ninety days regardless. Yeah. I mean, it's probably like a week, maybe, if anybody goes to jail.
I, I do not believe have any, nor would I. I'd be hard pressed to find many of those in the history of Monument because stayed within Monument. That stay within Monument, because we always go to county court on those. We have a whole, just holding facility to take us from point A to a blood draw, somebody's drunk, somebody's fighting, somebody's combative, something to hold them long enough while we're watching them to get our paperwork done to then take them to the jail. You bet. I know this is
Yeah, if I can, if I could jump back in, the state statute has been uh, modified to allow that that jail time to go up to one year now. So, so if we did one year, it would be consistent with, with state statute.
I've got no problem with being consistent with state statute.
No.
But we'll never use it or most likely unplausibly not use it.
Yeah, and if I can focus for just a second, um, try to determine the page, page fifty eight of your packet. It's uh, page thirteen of thirteen of exhibit A to the, to the uh, ordinance. Uh, this provision that we're talking about is one point two zero point zero one zero. And you can see the way it is written currently, it does, does change that ninety days to one year. It keeps the fine amount at, at twenty six fifty, because we haven't been able to confirm what that CPI uh, escalator would result in, and I'll explain that a little bit here in just a second. But then it does have also that last clause that the fine amount shall be annually adjusted based on CPI. When, when we, we did, we did a couple of calculations of that number, and then we went to try to check that against other municipalities. And what we found, checking municipalities up and down the front range, they're all over the place. And so we could not conclude that our calculations fit, uh, you know, we looked at Denver, we looked at Aurora, we looked at Thorndamn, I mean, just, we looked at a number of them uh, that we thought were adjusting. And we couldn't, we couldn't uh, come to the conclusion that our calculation was was correct by comparing it to another municipality. So that's, that's why um you know, I'm scratching my head a little bit over that number. But if you wanted to go forward as someone suggested with the ordinance tonight, with the fine amount at, at twenty six fifty and then have us come back when we feel confident that we've corrected that increase uh, calculated that increased fine amount, that is the way the ordinance is written right now. It would accomplish that, and then we could come back and give you that number later to it, to amend.
Just to clarify then, and I know this is an ordinance in a public hearing item, and we haven't got there yet. Um, so if we just approve it as is, uh, the CPI would are already be included in that? There's no modification necessary?
Uh, for future for future increases, yes, but to increase the fine amount from twenty thirteen based on CPI to the current, it does not. It has that, that twenty thirteen amount, twenty six
Language to modify that if we do so make a motion after public hearing?
What, what do you need to modify? The, the twenty six fifty base?
Well, Mr. Cole just said, uh, to adjust the CPI from two thousand thirteen to current.
It's built in though. It, it's, it's gonna, it, it, yeah, it's gonna be a bill, it's built in so that every January first, it could change without having us to go back through.
Yeah, that's not what I heard, Mr. Cole.
So right, right now, at, as written, it still shows twenty six fifty. Plus the CPI. However, we, we can, and what Mr. Cole was saying is we can approve it as is, as it's written right now, twenty six fifty with the CPI adjustment on January first. And then, once they figure out the CPI and once they figure out the, the cost, they can come back and adjust the twenty six fifty to say it's going to be ten thousand with the CPI adjustment. Um, and, and, and then we can decide to amend it to say that, yeah, at that point. I, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I, so I have a basic question on the twenty six fifty. Um, is that an arbitrary number that was just kind of generated out of the air somewhere at some point in time? Or do we know?
Yeah, it was in the statute. And I, I think what they did, although I'm not certain, but I think they, they did I think, I think the legislative services, when they amended the statute, did a calculation from the last time that the fine amount was increased based on inflation up to the year that that, that increase was put into effect statutorily. And they came up with the twenty six fifty. And then they didn't want to have to go back and change that annually or periodically. So in the statute, then they added this language that said, and you can increase it by CPI. And, and, and this amount will go up. So uh, I think that's how they came up with it.
Would it be possible for us to set it at some arbitrary number since we don't know what it is?
But it, it's in the statute.
I got it.
Twenty six fifty. So why would we change it now? We should just leave it at that and then adjust it after they've determined what the, the new number is.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I do think that's the best way to go about it. Uh, let us come back with, with a number that we feel confident in. And we can say, this is the, this is the number that for twenty twenty five, the statute allows. And that'll be the stated number of your code, but your code will say, and it goes up annually. That makes sense.
Yep.
Okay, so this is a public hearing item. Um, I can't see who's there in the public, but we will open it up to public hearing. Uh, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Or add any comments about the ordinance?
Not seeing anyone step up.
Thank you for that, Mr. Romanella, because all I can see is you right now.
You're very welcome.
Okay, uh, well, I see everybody who's online. I assume none of the town staff um or one of our developers would like to speak to this ordinance, but if they would like to. Now, okay, so we'll close the public hearing item, bring it back to council for further discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number oh four two oh two five, an ordinance repealing and re adopting title one of the Monument Municipal Code.
Second.
Motion on second. Ms. Erickson.
Furito?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimball?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Mary La Kind?
Yes. That motion passes seven two zero. Uh, no resolutions tonight. Next up on our list is discussion items. We have several, uh, first one being uh, town manager position. I think it was uh, about a month ago, we put out the first uh, version of the job description for uh, the town manager role. And um you have all been kind enough to provide feedback to Mr. Cole, uh, who has then incorporated uh, those, those changes along with a couple of uh, suggestions that he made. Um, that final draft was sent out to you earlier today. The next steps on our list, uh, besides discussing this particular item uh, is, and, and oh, by the way, it also went to Emily. Um, and she is here to answer any uh, questions or provide any uh, feedback, but uh, the next step is to take this uh, job description along with uh, she can discuss the recommended salary um, range that she was able to discover, uh, that's been out through salary surveys. Um, and then we would direct her, uh, if it's agreed upon to post uh, the position internally uh, to town employees first. And see if there's anybody who would like to apply for the position as the permanent town manager. So we'll open it up for council to discuss the document. If there was any other changes you wanted to see or um, any questions for Emily?
I think the job description's well done. Book them, Dano.
Alright, council member has spoken. Any other feedback? Uh, any questions for Emily on, on how this process works? Um, she's gonna format it to fit uh, the HR system uh, tools. Uh, so the format in the document that you see uh, not necessarily how it's gonna look when it posts internally. She may add some things like benefits and uh, whatever else HR posts as part of a, a job opening.
So yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Why don't you come up, Emily, and tell us how this process works?
Thanks. So pretty much kind of uh, Mary La Kind went over a little bit. We do need to finalize it, put it into our templates that we do have this kind of set for most of our employees, even though the town manager is chosen by the council. It just creates a little bit more of a, a standard. It'll add some benefits in there and it'll also fit with any ADA compliance and those lines. Just making sure that we have all the bells and whistles with that. Uh, we will post it internal, as Mary La Kind mentioned. If we do not have any interest, then we will post external. Um, it is a standard about two weeks of what we post it for. Um, so it will be posted open internally for two weeks. If we do not have any interest, then we will extend it to external sites as well for the additional two weeks.
Awesome.
And to that, we'll figure out, if we have those applicants, how the interview process will go. We'll touch base. We'll make sure that whatever the council decides in the process, it'll be collaborative.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cole, you wanted to add something? Thank you, Emily.
Yeah, I, I had a thought this afternoon and uh, just throw it out there for council to consider. You, you've had your interim town manager in that role for a few months now and, and seen what what the job involves, at least from an interim standpoint. And so it might be, uh, might be something you want to consider to have her take a look at the job description and also also give her input uh, based on her experience actually sitting in the chair for a while.
By all means, uh, send, it could be sent if Emily would like to forward it off, or you want to forward it off to Madeline, uh, by all means, send it off to her. If council's in agreement with that.
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
But if it gets posted uh, in the next uh, if, if Madeline has no concerns with it or any modifications, um, that can't be handled um, via, you know, email. Since we're not meeting again for another couple of weeks, uh, I would like to get this posted so that the two week uh, clock starts ticking and at the next meeting um, Emily can present uh the, the candidates to the council, so we can start that process, Mr. Cole, that you laid out some months ago. some months ago.
Yeah, we we can certainly work work to make that happen if, uh, yeah, we can do that.
Okay, do we want to discuss the salary range, Emily, that, um, you you sent to let the council know what it is so they have it in their mind, what we're looking at and where you got your information?
Yes, I'm sorry. I don't have the exact locations, but I did do some research for the wage via CML. So that gathers everyone that's in the CML territories that does that for the town managers. I took ones that any range from the populations of around 8,000 all the way up to 16,000 residents. Um, and I came to the number of about 180 to 260 a year. It seems to me the average that also aligns with what we have currently. Um, and then we will also get the response from our compensation survey, probably within the next month and a half. See if that aligns as well. If that does change, that will be brought to the council.
I hope it doesn't. Yeah, I hope it doesn't take that long, uh, to make the decision and we have applicants. Uh, is there any way we can get that particular, uh, line item from the compensation, uh, work that you're doing, uh, just for the town manager sooner?
So part of the process that our agency does, that we're partnering with C-Biz, they do evaluate the job descriptions to align with similar locations, similar to the way CML does it. So they would need to take a look at the job description that I can forward to them as well with permission of the council to evaluate and see if we can get that expedited. I can reach out to them this week to see if I can get an answer.
Okay. Anything else from the council on this particular discussion item?
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Emily.
Madeline, like you've provided us your report, something that I feel like we didn't get in the past, and then we're meeting with you one on one as as needed or as applicable. Some of those things could be added unless they're already covered in the the job request. Kind of eye calling. And if it's good, it's good, but maybe add some stuff that you've been doing. I would appreciate that anyway.
Sure. Once I see it, I'll I'll take a look at it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, if not, I will move on to the, uh, an update on the park survey, survey. Madeline?
Good evening, council. Um, you might remember in 2023, we sent out a park survey. Um, and what that led to was putting a, um, item on the ballot to have the lodging tax go towards, um, parks. And that issue has failed. Um, and so we are looking to see if we would like to reissue that survey out to our community um, at a cost of probably 15 to 20,000. Um, or another alternative might be, since we are going to be kicking off the comprehensive plan, we could use this as an opportunity to engage with our community to learn more about why they may not have passed that initiative. Um, and take some feedback and determine if we want to put that on the ballot again at a future date. Um, completely up to you. A survey would be easy. You know, we would probably use someone similar to Magellan, if not Magellan, um, based on, you know, the RFP process. However, we do have a unique opportunity with our timing of the comprehensive plan to potentially save some money. We wouldn't want it to be necessarily part of the comprehensive plan. We would want it to be a little bit separate, but we do have an opportunity to potentially, um, tag team those those two items.
Yeah.
So, open to discussion what whatever you guys feel like might be best.
I like it as part of the comprehensive plan. I think that's a good idea.
Save the money.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, and I I would just say that in the back of our minds, we might want to think about the fact that it probably was not worded well. And that's one of the reasons it failed. But again, there were restricted by how to word certain ballot initiative initiatives. So maybe we need to yeah, and just education to the public and and that sort of thing, because the minute you mentioned the three letter word tax, it's it's a no.
Yeah, I mean, we could. We could even do some reaching out ourselves, you know, through social media or otherwise and just try to get a feel for where people are at. Uh, you know, and as a jumpstart to the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, but bundling it to save money does make sense.
Yeah.
And I I wouldn't necessarily consider it bundling because it wouldn't necessarily be done by our consultant, but we would have the opportunity to engage with the community because we're already engaging with them. So, um, we have some some new staff members that have experience with these educational campaigns too. So I'll be working with them to get kind of their past experience and and best practices on these kind of educational outreach events too, so.
Thank you, Madeline. Um, so it sounds like the direction is to move this into a topic to be discussed during the comprehensive plan activities, which brings us to the next discussion item, which is appointing two council members to the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. Mr. Underlighter is going to lead that discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi. So, uh, in, uh, coming up very quickly, the faster than I thought was going to come up is our is our kickoff for our comprehensive plan. Uh, March 3rd will be, uh, you'll be, you'll get to meet the consultant firsthand here at your meeting, who will walk you through Engagement Week. I am proud to say that, uh, we have, uh, over 300, uh, initial, um, suspects or participants in our in our in our, uh, Engagement Week process. We have 17 focus groups set up between Tuesday and Thursday. Uh, utilizing here at the Town Hall, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, the YMCA and Bear Creek Elementary. So we're going to be all over town those three days. Um, we have, um, so far, we have a a great, uh, steering committee established. Uh, we have got Chad Smith and Ray Egley from, uh, from the Plan Commission, uh, Terry Hayes from the Chamber, representing the business community. Uh, Haley Chapman is a volunteer to be, um, representing, uh, the unrepresented, as I like to describe it. Um, and Phil Stewart from HR Green, um, representing the home builders, uh, group. So we've got a really well-rounded group, but I need two coun- two counselors to be on that group as well to help guide the process and just keep us on track and to report back to council when appropriate. Um, I, um, I want to thank, first of all, before, you know, you guys start talking about who might represent you on the Steering Committee. I want to thank, uh, Mayor Protem King and, uh, Councilor Chronic for their their work, um, is, I'm in the RFP review or the proposal review. Um, it was great having them there and giving us guidance and helping to set the high expectations for the process. So thank you. Um, but I wouldn't want to assume that you both would be continue that, uh, that work on on the Steering Committee. So I turn it back to, uh, council and, uh, ask for you to appoint, uh, two council members to participate in the Steering Committee. Uh, just so that you're aware, the Steering Committee is probably going to meet five times during the process. It might meet more if needed. I suspect that you're going to get participate in other events and project, uh, other events as part of the conference, uh, comprehensive plan separately, but the Steering Committee is going to just meet about five times.
During what time period?
Uh, during the next, uh, 16 months. So it's a time commit wa- commitment wise, it might be a few hours each meeting, just to kind of let us do our report, ask you questions, um, ask for guidance. Uh, and then you get to go back to work and and the rest of your life, and then you could participate in other events. Um, we're going to have a a big party on the Fourth of July. Uh, it, um, under a tent, just telling the community about the comprehensive plan, and I would hope that, uh, council would be involved with that. Uh, but the Steering Committee is actually a very limited commitment.
Can you ex- can you, before we have volunteers, can we, can you explain a little bit about what the role of the Steering Committee does?
Um, so, uh, thanks, Mayor. The, uh, the Steering Committee's, uh, primary job is to keep is to keep the project on track and on schedule. Um, and then if there's any kind of, uh, uh, questions that the consultants or I as staff have of, um, what direction we want to go with a specific issue or not, we're going to bring you to the Steering Committee and and talk with you about it. Um, you're not going to be making, uh, resolutions or approving things, but you are going to provide, uh, some guidance. Um, I don't want to pretend that, uh, I I know which way I don't. I want to don't want to pretend I know where this is going. Um, so I I need a a a good representation of the community and council there to help support um, and direct, uh, me and and our consultant team as we're moving forward.
Okay, and Great. Thank you for that.
I I would. I will just kind of bring this back a little bit. In a different municipality, I was on a planning commission and we we've gone through this. We went through this process. It was, you know, over a year and, um, it was, you know, very interesting process, but I will say this is a planning commission driven project. So council won't have a a ton of guidance on this because the planning commission is really the ones that are going to put this together. But, um, but yeah, we definitely need representation from up here. I heard Laura wants to, a little birdie told me that Senna was interested in this, so, um, I would be, I would be nominating those two if we get, if we nominate anybody, but everybody else can speak.
It's it's Is it possible to have somebody from each district? Uh, one person from each district representing, uh, the Steering Committee? Uh, there's going to be a pa- is there a reason for that or is that not necessary?
I'd be willing to do it, but I mean, I thought if Steve and Laura were, but that's probably a wise idea, but I'm willing to throw my hat in.
I think we're all probably willing to throw our hats into this thing, but just know it's a planning commission driven project.
Uh, may I? Uh, so, um, there are going to be so many opportunities for each district to be represented. Um, if you notice, just the location of the Engagement Week was set up. So it wasn't on one side of the community or the other. Uh, we made sure when you see, when you see the focus group schedule, you're going to see that we're we're reaching out to many different sectors, many different locations. Um, so I I wouldn't be, um, concerned about making sure that you're representing your districts in the Steering Committee. Uh, but the Steering Committee will make sure that we are reaching out to each of those different neighborhoods of those there, different areas or that we've held community events in different locations. Uh, there's a, there's a reason we're at Bear Creek Elementary as opposed to in Town Hall. Uh, we want to make, in Bear Creek Elementary, we're going to be doing our first community conversation uh, and breakout session, uh, for the comprehensive plan, and we're doing that after spending the entire day at the YMCA. So we're we're going to be doing doing a lot of that outreach that you would hope to do. And then you'll be able to step in and and and, uh, participate or listen. Um, I don't want to. I don't want you to feel that you can't be part of the process. Uh, you should be part of the process. Uh, we just can't have it driven at the top level. We want it. We want buy-in and support from from, uh, the residents in the, uh, the business community. So I I would ask that we have it just two because that gives us a a two council members because that gives us a a steering committee of seven, which is very manageable. I mean, that's how you guys work. Uh, so I I would recommend or ask for that. And then I I promise you, I will provide you many opportunities to participate over the next six to four months.
Okay, cool. So I'm guessing that everybody on the council has no issue with volunteering to do this, but if there are two that are very strong, strong-willed about it and you can sub, you know, beat into submission the remainder remaining five. By all means, speak up.
Uh, yeah.
I'm fine with Jim and and Laura, if you guys want to tackle it. I mean, I probably will be at some of those meetings anyway, but I'm, you might have more bandwidth than me, Jim.
That's debatable, but
And then it's a 10. Are you or Marco at all interested?
I'm I'm more interested in in the actual meetings. So, yeah.
Well, I mean, Laura, Laura and I have worked well together on several projects, but yeah, I know, uh-huh. Uh, it it, listen, again, I'm not strong-willed about it. I just, yeah. I'm open.
Okay, well, I mean, it sounds like there's two people that no one has, there's nobody dissenting amongst the ranks, uh, as to whether it's who, if it's Jim or or and Laura. So if if that's fine and everybody's gives a head nod, we can just set the appointment to Jim and Laura or Laura and Jim, however you want to.
Laura, make it so.
We're good. I think that's a good choice.
Oi, oi.
Now for the bad news. No, don't. That sounds great.
One of the two.
Is there a blood draw or something, Dan?
Yes, and whoever gets selected, you'll hear a large thundering boom from the sky. Uh, yeah, yeah. Uh, so I don't, I don't know if we need to vote for that or not. We just, I have to run with, uh, Laura.
We don't need to vote.
Very good. Thank you. I look forward to working with all of you and, uh, and, uh, Councilor Romanella and Chronic or Chronic and Romanella. We'll we'll get it worked out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for our volunteers. Next up, uh, public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Do we have anybody online or in person that would like to make a public comment?
Definitely.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Uh, my name is Mary Lou Figley. I'm here as a representative and one of the volunteers and a member of the Silver Key Senior Center here in Tri-Lakes. And I just want to mention some facts because we're, we'll be searching for a new home very soon. Actually, right now. So we do have over 300 members and have approximately five to eight events daily. Um, I'm here to speak about the support of the center and its many members, as well as our inevitable need to move to our new location. I speak for many of the folks at the Senior Center that during our tenure at Grace Best are sharing the space with the school, the children and other groups. It's been absolutely wonderful. This building houses many local groups, along with the seniors. Children's Literacy Program, Men's Ministry, the Monument Chat Group, Retired Coaches and Teachers Group. Goal would be to have a community hub to integrate child education, healthcare, arts, and our seniors. These are real humans who need connection to the other members, teachers, volunteers, classes, study groups, and the rest. Their time at the center may be the only means of connection to our community. Silver Key Senior Center has many meetings to its members. Here are some that people have shared with me. Companionship, camaraderie, a happy place, social interaction, a safe place, comfort in socializing, great instructors, appeals to a wide range of seniors, healthy classes and healthy menus for our seniors, a warm and accepting community using creative skills as well. In closing, I want to share our gratitude for your years of supporting the Senior Center and hopes of continued support moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, I can't see anybody, so um, I'll take that as a no. We'll close public comment and move on to future agenda items. Do we have any future agendas items? Madeline?
We do. Yes, thank you.
It's not on the list. I figured we were going to breeze right by it.
Um, the Small Business Development Center would like to present the Small Business Week proclamation on April 21st. And I would just like to see if council would be okay with that.
Is that before or after Small Business Week?
It should be before Small Business Week. Small Business Week is usually the first week of May.
Okay, because last year we, it was after. So as long as we're doing the proclamation before this time, that would be great.
I will double check it, but, um, I'll put it down for the 21st at this point. Um, good news, the heart of Monument Park land is now officially ours. Um, so would we like to do any sort of ceremony either at the park or here at a council meeting to, um, celebrate the accomplishment? Okay. We will work on coordinating something with, um, the church and the Kiwanis to, um, commemorate that donation of land. And then finally, my last item, um, And then finally, my last item, um Emily let me know that the three sixty evaluations that everyone completed for me um how the results have come in, and so we would like to schedule a future executive session to go over those results with you.
Sounds good.
And those are the only items I have at this time.
I have one request. When you're doing the Heart of Monument Park, make sure it's during good weather.
I will pull out my all of my favors.
Okay, um if there's no other future agenda items, we'll move on to council comments. Any members of the council have comments?
I just want to say I love the map uh on the wall of Jackson Creek, whoever decided to do that. Uh it's a great idea and I appreciated that.
Yeah, comments.
Didn't see that.
Yeah, I didn't get to see it. Take a picture.
Um.
Don't do it. Don't do it. Don't do it. I'm not.
All right, well, um I guess it's been sent out via email, but I have a comment. Um my daughter gave birth to Lily Grace she on on the tenth. Um we are out here helping uh with uh well, I I help hold the baby um as much as I'm allowed to. And we'll be doing some some cooking and cleaning to help the the parents out so they can get some sleep. That's my only announcement. I know it's got nothing to do with council, but I am ecstatic about my new granddaughter.
I just want to know if you're changing diapers.
Oh, no. Not yet. Not yet. Uh, the the father is doing quite well with that. All right, we will move on to uh executive session. And that we will, if someone wants to read that off. Bitch, I'm sorry. Yeah.
We're not done with council comments.
Oh, thought we were.
Just asking to get a uh we're rep status-wise with the Mister Mister lighting. I want to emphasize that the lighting that is an annoyance to the residents directly adjacent. It's due to the Mister Mister sign and the yellow arc. That's equal to the um first floor level of those townhomes. That's what.
Heightways.
Yeah, heightwise. So if they can, if we can get those lights shut off on the south and on the north side of the building. Um that way, the Mister Mister can keep the light on the east side facing Baptist Road, but then also shut off the lighting by the three gate area where the end where people enter to pay. I think that that would help out tremendously.
So um the fir- first of all, uh Mister Mister was approved before I started here. Uh Mister Mister's lights are in accordance with the permits that were issued by this by this community. Uh with that said, we are working directly with the uh owner and the manager of that of that store uh to modify um modify lighting that uh we understood was the problem. Uh you their the lights should be, although not uh consistently, the lights are being turned off at closing time. Um and we're working, as I said, not consistently. It's 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 uh lights being turned off are dependent on the employees who are working that evening uh to turn the lights off, but we're working with them to make that more consistent. We're also working with them on putting shades on the light on the lights that we found to be offensive or or a challenge. Uh but this is truly um a uh two parties trying to work together to solve an issue. Uh this is not code related. They have a they have a permit um that they followed in a development in development review that they followed throughout the process. Uh so we are uh happy that they're working with us, and we're going to continue working with them to to address the issues that you brought up, uh Counselor Kimball.
Thank you, Dan.
And and just as a reminder, if you do have items um that you would like to, a request for code enforcement, we do have that tracker on our website um which is the best way for us to track that information.
Has this one been put into the tracker? This particular issue?
I don't believe it.
All right, well. Someone probably should put it in there, so that's officially in unless unless Dan has put it in already.
Well, no, it well, is a I have not put in it, but I haven't. It's not a code issue. We uh we reviewed the the approved plans for the site and the approved permits, um and they were constructed as the the town approved it at the time. But um we are working with them as of just today. We uh we're we had communications with the the owner and we're uh they are purchasing equipment to to ma- make modifications to the existing lighting, and we're going to continue working with them until um both parties are satisfied or understand we've done the best.
Can you turn your mic on?
That'd help. So I believe what I can explain is the difference. A code enforcement violation is where we have something in ordinance where we are not in compliance. What we are telling you is they are actually in compliance and where we were, so there's nothing for us to enforce, but planning commission then is and the planning department is working to come to a agreeable solution now that our our requests are changing so that it it's mutually beneficial. But it's not something that we're going to be able to follow up on. If you gave that to my PSA, they'd look at it, they'd go through it, and they'd say there's no violation of any ordinance. Thank you. Have a nice day, and it'd be done. So that's not really the path you're looking for going. This is a friendly dialogue situation. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commander. Any other council comments? Okay, then we'll move on to the executive session. Uh we have executive session pursuant to twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, B, CRS for a conference with town attorney to receive legal advice concerning the procedures for municipal annexation. We will clear the
Did you just make a motion for that, Mister Mayor?
Sure, I'm making the motion that we go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Are we going to adjourn after that, Mister Mayor?
We are going to adjourn after that.
Okay, I second the motion then.
Perfect. This Erickson.
Councilmember Chronic? Yes. Councilmember Romanello?
Yes.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimball?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Piorito?
I. Are we taking a five-minute uh break?
The motion passes uh seven to zero. We'll take a um a six-minute break. And uh so so we can switch team meetings, and I'll join you on the executive session here in a few.